Just barely, though. Not too far.
Didn't we have agenda committee meeting, too?
We did. That was last Tuesday. That was even sooner after the New Year, huh?
It's seven o'clock.
Because I thought I recognized you.
Yeah, he looks familiar. Ron, are you able to do the time tonight for?
Yeah, thanks for asking me now.
Well, thank you. And I don't know if Rebecca or Bob, if either of you are interested in doing a flag salute.
I can do it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Nis.
Hey.
So it's seven o'clock. Let's wait another minute or two here and see if our remaining board members show up. Hey, Dave. Happy New Year. Right, Ian, Brian, awesome. Hi, Brian, welcome. Let's go ahead and get started. Call to order this meeting, the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. We'll start off with our flag salute, and Director Pyros has graciously offered to lead us. Whenever you're ready, Rebecca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone. This is quite exciting, our first Board of Directors meeting in 2021. So far, so good. All right, so tonight's agenda is relatively late. We've got our public comments after this. We'll have three public comments. And we'll go into board and superintendent comments. Then we'll look at our consent agenda. We have an in-person limited, or I should say, school in-person update from Dr. Morlock. An ad hoc committee update from both our Start Time Committee and our Equity Committee. We'll take a quick break and come back for a mental and school health services report from Dr. Neff. Conversation around the NSBA National Convention. Okay, let's get started with our public comments. So I will say the name of the person and then the next person who's up, just so you have a little bit of a heads up. So tonight, we'll start with Anthony, and then we'll follow that with Tara. And just a reminder, we cannot listen to any personnel complaint or complaints directed to the board regarding specific board members. Wilson is out of control tonight. It's okay. So we're happy that you're here, and we always appreciate hearing from the public. So let's go ahead and get started. Well, actually, let's wait a second, Ron.
Oh, yeah, I'll get my picture up here in a minute when I'm on top of myself. How many minutes are we giving them today?
Three minutes. And so they'll get a one-minute warning and then a 30-second warning. All right, you said? Perfect. Okay, so we'll have Anthony and then followed by Tara. All right. Anthony, it looks like you are muted, but you can go ahead and get started whenever you're ready.
Thank you for having me today. Here, I'm just going to pull up what I had typed out and sent to whoever had emailed me. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. The issue of whether we should go back to school or not is a controversial one. Some strictly believe that we need to stay home, while others believe that we need to go back now. Whether you believe that or not, it's an undeniable fact that students are slipping through the cracks, and the district continues to allow this to happen. Lack of motivation and loneliness both contribute to students not performing their best. Even though work has been cut down exponentially, students are feeling like the weight of their work is too much, which causes them to feel overwhelmed, resulting in them not doing their work. This eventually leads to students getting behind, which causes stress. The cycle is vicious. Kids in elementary school are not learning all of the essential skills that they need to succeed later in their school careers or out in the real world. I know that I have personally felt unmotivated to do my work as well. You could say that it's morally wrong to go back to school in the middle of a pandemic, but wouldn't you also say that it's morally wrong to allow students to slip through the cracks and move on into the real world without an understanding of the basic subjects that we need to know? This might not be your future, but it is mine. Please let us go back to school. We all need it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I see in the chat, Director Penya asked if we have interpretation tonight, and that's a great question. Greg, do you know? I don't see anyone.
I have not seen them, and I don't, I will have to check. That may be partially my fault for not following up after our meeting in December. I mean, I followed up after a meeting in December, but did not follow up again more recently, so I apologize. I did not see them here at this point. I will follow up.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. So next, we have Tara, and after Tara, we will have Brianna.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay, my name's Tara Hilton. I'm a parent of two current high school students at NHS, and I'm speaking tonight along the lines of Anthony after reading the recent update on reopening schools to in-person learning, where it stated that schools to open, even in hybrid, that staff will need to be vaccinated and showing immunity. This was a new requirement that's not even been mentioned in prior updates, and I personally was shocked. It seems that with every potential opening window, with the governor moving to advisory, with the legislation passed to relax liability for schools, the goalpost is moved by districts and staff unions, as if the intention is not to get our kids back in schools this year after all, despite prior promises of doing so and with big question marks about happening in the fall. We have relied upon you to prioritize our kids, and yet it continues to get kicked down the field, ignoring the will of your students, parents, and community. I'm here tonight to urge you, as a school board, to reconsider this plan. We have all been learning how to deal with this COVID situation in the last year. We've learned a lot. We understand the virus better. We know how to combat spread with masks, hygiene, personal responsibility. We've done our part. We're taking it seriously. We're listening to experts, top public health experts in this country, who have been saying for months in-person learning is not only safe, but is crucial. Even Dr. Fauci stated this should be our priority. He has never once said vaccines first. There are research coming out from the Academy of American Pediatrics showing that the risk is minimal, and the data on top of the other 40 states who've been doing this in person should be our models, including cities like New York, Chicago, Miami. Give us the evidence and confidence we can and should get our kids in the classrooms now, not after a vaccination, zero spread, or herd immunity. It's not a viable expectation or plan. We will never have our kids in school if that's what it's going to be. And what if staff refuses the vaccine? What is the plan then? We should at least be given the option to have our kids in class if they so feel want to do that. I implore you, as a parent, please listen. And lastly, if you intend to intent, excuse me, intend to continue with the vaccination plan, and it keeps high schoolers specifically out of class this school year, I ask you all to be the one to tell your 2021 senior class why you will not allow them to have some semblance of normalcy to finish their high school careers. I'm tired of doing that work. Their lives have arguably been harmed the most by these decisions by the district, and if this continues, unfortunately, we will join the many other families who have looked elsewhere to educate and develop their children the way that our district has refused to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Okay, last night, we have Brianna.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Hi, Brianna, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brianna Hilton. I'm a senior ASB leader at the high school. I joined tonight because I'm concerned about the requirements going back to school. As a senior, I want to be able to have memories of a senior year, but also to be actually able to prepare me for getting a degree in my future. I'm taking college-level classes, but I'm not retaining any information online. This doesn't prepare me at all for what college will look like. Along with that, I have lost motivation and love for so many things. Before online school, I had motivation to practice and work out every day, along with doing homework and studying and juggling my daily life. Now with online school, I barely have motivation to get out of bed. Starting my senior year online was not ideal, but luckily I still had the opportunity to attend zero-period waits every morning, which helped everyone who attended feel more motivated and felt a little bit more normal. For the past two and a half months without it, we have not had any source of normalcy. We sit on our computers for three or more hours a day than most of us stay in our rooms on our phones for the rest of it. By keeping schools closed, you are creating a depressed and anxious generation who also faces mental health issues because of technology. My only senior year memory as of right now is sitting in front of a computer every day. For high schoolers right now, we have been told our life, our whole life, how high school is supposed to be the best years of our lives. But for us, it's the worst years of our lives right now. By going back to school, you would instantly improve mental health and development issues you are creating right now. As seniors, we want some normalcy to end our high school years, so please reconsider the decisions to keep schools closed, especially high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. And we also have a public comment that was received via email, so that written comment will be put into the board packet minutes as well. And thank you to everybody who has joined us this evening. Okay, let's move into board comments. Let's see, Director Shannon, do you have any comments this evening?
No.
Director Penya, do you have any comments?
I'm just happy everybody to be back on on these meetings and being able to hear our constituents. You know, the holidays are important and keeping everybody safe, so just having that be available another way to hear our community. Thank you.
Director Mock, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, a little. First of all, I wanted to apologize for those who were counting on translation. It's a new system. We're trying to figure out how to make it regular, but I recognize that could be a disadvantage, and that was not intended, and I'm sure we'll fix it. I also wanted to comment a little bit on the opening of schools. There are different districts around the state who are doing different things. Most of the districts who are opening are in more rural areas, south, southern Oregon, or eastern Oregon. And I know that there's a few that are a little closer that are trying. I think everybody here on the board is eager to get the schools open as soon as it's safe to do so. And so I I don't think we'll wait to be the tail end of the metropolitan area, but in our metropolitan area, the conditions are different than they are in Band or Roseburg or Malheur County. And I don't know that we can open as quickly or as as quickly as they can, because we are in a different situation in terms of the pandemic. So I want to just let people know that I know I speak for several on the board, that this is a matter that we're very concerned about and we never stop thinking about. And we're going to try to do the best we can to get kids in school. My two sons were both seniors last year and lost the last four months or three months of their senior year experience. This district did a great job on graduation, but they didn't, you know, it still wasn't the same, so entirely in sympathy with Brianna and Tara's comments about the impact on seniors.
Director Brown, do you have any comments this evening? Oh, you're muted.
The Dr. Joe thing. There you go. You know, kind of my goal is to try to stay really positive coming into 2021. You know, over Christmas break, you know, being in the community for a long time, knowing lots of families and kids, I kind of heard similar sentiments to that. It is a really complex problem, like Ron was just saying. I asked many, many months ago, and I think it's something that, as a school board, you know, I would be willing to be part of it in any way, shape, or form to be as creative as we can, especially for the seniors. The senior year for a high school kid is, it is an amazing time, and they're getting robbed of that. Last year, the kids at least got a half a year. These kids are getting zero, and I heard the comment that we would start back with grade school kids first. And, you know, I would like to see us, and we have quite a few young teachers at high school. It may not be ideal. It would definitely be hybrid. But there's got to be a way to get our seniors in for a day a week, two days a week. Split them up, you know, definitely mask, washing lunch hours, but I'd sure like to see us try to be creative as a school board to work with our superintendent to make that happen. I just think it's all the issues that we've created, you know, by having no school, they're pretty deep, and the kids are suffering. I think we really need to maybe not look at our own personal feelings about, you know, being locked in, locked out, or whatever, but going back with some really strong protocols and giving it a shot, because it's Governor Brown let us make that decision now. And so we could make some type of addition to get some of our high school kids back, not nine of them, like the one class we're talking about, but I think we should really focus hard on the seniors. And so that's my comment for tonight. So thank you.
Director Pyros, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, at the last board meeting, we talked about the translation, which unfortunately it isn't happening tonight. But I went to the Latinx parent meeting and invited the parent group to the board meetings. And through that meeting, we realized that our agenda was not translated for the parents. And through going to that meeting this last Monday, they received the first agenda in Spanish that they at least are aware of what's happening at the board meeting. And we're looking into more things that we can do to make the meetings more accessible and helpful for our Latinx parents. And I'm very thankful for that experience. And there's going to be another meeting on Thursday at 7:00 PM. I would like to invite any board member to attend that to experience the vibrancy and the interests the Latinx parents have. It's a great opportunity. And I appreciate also the students and parents comment tonight. We do feel your pain and want, listen to you. Thank you so much.
And Director Woodruff, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, just wanted to kind of follow up what several folks have said, you know, about our public comment and wanting to have folks back into school. Me and my family share in that emotional desire, and I speak as one board member, but I hear it from everybody else that our goal for all of us is to get kids back into school in the safest way that we can do that. I also wanted to say, you know, something I joke about is that, you know, the work of school boards and the work of local government is fascinatingly boring or boringly fascinating. But something I've also said, you know, and it kind of sounded like, you know, I almost felt a little bit weird saying it because it sounded a little bit overwrought. You know, something I've said in the past is that, you know, schools, public schools are the crucible where we form the society that we want to have. And I think the events of the past week have shown the importance of engaging in that work of creating that society that we all want to have. So I want to thank everybody who's attending tonight. You know, we had parent meetings last week looking at the idea of changing school times. Folks were very engaged in that. We had 45 parents at the English language, and I believe 20 or so at the Spanish language version. We've had folks very engaged in our work for the bond. We've had folks very engaged throughout all my time as a school board member. And I just want to say how much that means to me personally and how much that means to our community to have folks who are engaged in that work and don't see it as a win-lose battle, but as a process of creating a better society. So I want to thank all the folks who have engaged in that work at any level.
Great. I just have a brief brief comment. On the last day of an incredibly challenging year, Newburgh lost one of its most beloved community members. Sandy Shine was an educational assistant at Shaillan Valley Middle School and impacted both students and staff in innumerable ways. When my own sixth grader showed up excited to explore the possibilities of all that middle school had to offer, it was Mrs. Shine who opened the cafeteria and stayed late for an after-school club. It was Mrs. Shine who served on the site council, lending a perspective that was unique and well-respected by her colleagues and community members. It was Mrs. Shine who took young educators under her wing and supported them. Because you see, Sandy Shine was an institution. A lot of people knew Sandy, and the reason is simple. She was a kind-hearted helper. She did not shy away from her work because her work was always about the kids. Sandy was respected and loved by so many because she showed respect and love to everyone. She was kind, but more than that, she was a leader. And I don't think that she would have given herself that title, but she led every day by example. It was clear that Mrs. Shine saw the value in every human that entered her orbit. Your title, your age, your ability didn't matter in her eyes. She was a reminder to us all that every human counts and every human matters. I grieve for her family, friends, and coworkers, but my heart breaks for her students, and in her eyes, all of her kids seem to be her students. The loss of a community member is always difficult, but the loss of Mrs. Shine in this challenging and contentious time hits especially hard. She changed lives by showing up for those who needed it the most. She contributed love and compassion to this world. The world is undoubtedly in need of more shine, and I call on all of us to keep her legacy alive by practicing kindness and remembering that every human deserves dignity and love. Okay, Dr. Morlock, time for superintendent comments.
Want to make sure I could unmute before Dave could catch me off guard again, so it's good. I hit the mute button this time. All right, a couple of quick updates. This coming Monday, January 18th, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, it's a federal holiday. It's held every third Monday of January, so it celebrates the life and achievements of Martin Luther King Jr., and we all know that he was an influential American civil rights leader, so I want to just remind everybody of that. This week is National Pizza Week. For those of you who have a pizza problem like I do, it is the second Sunday of January. It's the start, so Americans actually eat 100 acres of pizza or 350 slices per second, which is sort of amazing. Around the world, 5 billion pizzas are sold each year, and Super Bowl Sunday is the biggest day for pizza sales. For our bond update, we are currently in the middle of reviewing the RFPs, the Request for Proposals, from seven firms who submitted them at the end of last week. We have a group that's reviewing all those, and we will select some semifinalists for interviews and presentations that will happen next week on Wednesday. We hope to make a final decision at the end of the week to bring to an upcoming board meeting after the protest period ends. So lots of great RFPs, lots of detail in them, but we're looking forward to finding the best fit for the Newburgh and Dundee program. So exciting stuff. Great to see what people have put together, trying to be the finalist. A quick COVID update, we are in the last two weeks up from the last two weeks period, which was 328.5. We're up to 403.5 at a 6.6 test positivity. We are worse than the state overall average, which was at 379. We're worse than Clackamas at 349. We're worse than Multnomah at 312, and we're worse than Washington at 340. So Yamhill took pole position among all of those counties, and so we have some work to do. 23,000 people died last week nationally, and about 250,000 per day are infected, so we have some work to do around making sure that we are wearing our masks and properly working through the hygiene. So I wanted to highlight that. We did open the opportunity for students to move in or out of CDL and COA. So we had talked about doing that before at the semester break. If people wish they were in COA, could go to CDL or back, or vice versa. We did have a webinar just last night, and we've had some other messaging out there. As of today, we have 14 students indicating they want to move from COAS to CDL, and we have seven who are indicating they want to go from CDL to COA. So on balance, really, only seven that would be returning to CDL overall. Those numbers will change a little bit because the deadline is the end of this week, but I wanted to give you the update for what we knew so far. Brandy, you did an excellent job talking about Sandy Shine, so I will not try to repeat. That was a lovely message about her. She will be truly missed, so thank you for your update. I'm going to skip mine because that was lovely. I did want to quickly highlight an American hero who most likely saved further violence to lawmakers in the Senate and within the Capitol Building more generally last week. Eugene Goodman, who is a Capitol Police officer, used his instincts to divert rioters away from the unlocked Senate doors and onto another floor while it could be locked down. Check out his story online, and you can probably find it easily, Eugene Goodman. Hopefully, we'll see him in the history books of the future. And that is what I have for you tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have our consent agenda, and there are a few donations I'd like to draw attention to. The first one is from Freeman Manufacturing for $13,000 for two machines donated to Tiger Manufacturing. The Newburgh Rotary Club, $5,000 donations for resource rooms. The Dundee Parent Club, $9,390, which is a fundraiser distributed to all elementary schools. Reed Rentals, $1,000 gift card for the Newburgh High School Holiday Drive, and an anonymous donation of $2,150 for a gift card for the Newburgh High School Holiday Drive. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All right, with the motion and second, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Rebecca, is it better for you as a board if we have an auditory vote rather than just a hand vote?
No, mainly, I just, if it's a unanimous, that's fine, and then when there's dissension, you will say so many in agreement and who descended.
Okay, okay, then we'll just agree that. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Back to Dr. Morlock for a school in-person update. Nope, you're muted. Only 28.
See, I know I could have made it to, and now Dave can use that against me next time. All right, all right, that's good. All right. So there's a lot to go over tonight, so I will go through, and then we can get some questions at the end. I'm going to give you the most details. As you well know, things changed as of 5:00 something tonight from my 2:30 meeting that I had originally, so I will try to reorganize some of these notes. I'm going to talk about these main areas, the governor's December 23rd announcement, a vaccine update, testing protocols, liability, availability, things like that. Some messaging around our secondary students and our elementary students for limited in-person and the move to hybrid. So I'll try to get through each one of those as we go forward. So we did, so there has been a bit of a misunderstanding about the governor's date of February 15 in her announcement on the 23rd of December. It was not a directive. I think we've been getting some of that feedback there. Her messaging was specifically around getting systems ready, not necessarily a hard reopening date. I'm going to quote actually directly from the letter, so I won't be paraphrasing in a couple of paragraphs that were in there. And she said, And she said, quote, "First, it is imperative that Oregon's local school board, superintendents, educators and school employees work together toward the resumption of in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible, prioritizing elementary education." Her next quote was, "To this end, I'm asking for the continued support and partnership of your agencies, local school districts, educators and communities to ensure these critical decision-making processes continue to be grounded in sound science, public health and safety. It's my hope that more Oregon schools, especially elementary schools, will transition to in-person instruction by February fifteen, twenty twenty one." Her next one, she said, quote, "Third, effective January first twenty twenty one, Oregon's COVID nineteen health metrics for returning to in-person instruction will become advisory rather than mandatory. Moving forward, the decision to resume in-person instruction must be made locally, district by district, school by school. In addition to schools continuing to adhere to required health and safety protocols and working in close consultation with their local public health authority and understanding and considering the metrics, teachers, school staff, parents and students should be engaged in this decision-making process to allow schools to make the best choice for their community and their students." And then finally, she said, quote, "Consistent with the ongoing updates to the Ready Schools Safe Learners Guidance Prior Quarterly Review of Oregon's COVID nineteen health metrics for returning to in-person instruction, I'm directing the OHA and ODE to the that's sorry, Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Department of Education to evaluate and provide any needed updates based on scientific data and evidence to the appropriate thresholds for resumption of in-person instruction. Any updates to that COVID nineteen health metrics should be completed no later than January nineteenth, twenty twenty one." So those are some of the primary statements that she made for those things. We are expecting to see new metrics coming out on the nineteenth. I'll talk a little bit about liability because that that has come up. In fact, it came up in public comment tonight. So I'll talk a little bit more about that, about following the protocols later down in the update. Okay, so a vaccine update. As many who may have heard, the White House today announced that the national stockpile will now be released by throughput counts and not by population to states and are asking those asking for those who are over sixty five or having or over eighteen and having underlying health conditions would be vaccinated first during this time period. Governor Brown just announced, I think, an hour and a half ago that she is including school staff in that. In Oregon, it's about seventeen percent of our population for people who are over sixty five. I don't have the numbers for who has preexisting conditions. Again, they're being released through throughput counts, which are different than population counts. Throughput counts are based upon the number of vaccines that are actually being put into people's arms, right? So the amount that are coming, shipping, and then being used. So those states who have been able to spin theirs up more quickly and get them out the door, they are prioritized to get more vaccines. And so there's a differential and then the understanding of how the vaccines come out. Tonight's announcement by the governor, of course, is predicated. She talked about being able to start doing that by January twenty third. That's predicated on actually having vaccines in hand, which is part of the the major challenge. By releasing this second part of the stockpile, of course, that does not make any available for the second dose. As you know, the vaccine was a two dose required. They've been assured that production is up enough that they're going to be able to continue to keep up with having those. But just by making it sixty five and older and also trying to do educators and those with preexisting conditions, that's far more than the doses which are currently available. So we have some work to do to get those. She, of course, the governor, she's been targeting to get vaccine vaccinations to educators. So that was included in her thing tonight. I think that that'll be a part of our our challenge. So I think I spoke about that. That was a bit of an unexpected change that showed up this morning from the White House and the federal government and the changes in the CDC information that was different yesterday than it is today. And then the governor slightly changing that to prioritize that along with educators being in group one A now. So we've been told just as much as this afternoon that the governor does remain committed to serving educators first in this category one A. We are being told, however, that we may need to prioritize the workforce. So depending upon when we get them prioritize prioritization of who gets the vaccines first as far as our educational workforce as the as the change in in federal policy about the stockpile has moved a bit. Interestingly, about twenty five percent of the local public health authorities report they've been actively planning with school districts in general. We have been working with the annual public health and they've been engaging with multiple school districts. And so we have been working with them to develop our plan to be a closed pod. So point of distribution or point of dispersment. We are designated as a push partner, which means we can aid in some of that. One of the questions that came up, I know that we have, there are some folks who may have a negative reaction to vaccines in general. So the vaccine sites, of course, would be ready with mete pens and any other further interventions ready on site. This is not something that we would be doing ourselves. We'd be working with partners, of course, with the local public health authority, with our partners at Providence, TVFNR. They've all been kind of working, going through these things. So we would not be on our own just doing that. It'll be supervised and supported by by many folks, and we would have those things ready in case there were some sort of an emergency. So we've been contacted. We've been working on developing where our drive-through sites would be to be able to to bring those up to speed. Okay, I'm going to move through those. All right. So who's included? A question has come up a lot. Who would be included in the in the vaccination? This is everyone related to the school. So teachers, paraprofessionals, student teachers, many of our bus drivers, custodians, nutrition staff, school office staff, school administrators, counselors, mental health, childcare, folks who are related to the school. Anybody else that was part of that, coaches and officials, extracurricular staff and any district and education service district staff who spend time on school campuses. So anybody who would be related to and be working with students directly would be available for that. And there is, of course, no cost to the vaccine. We, as I mentioned before, we will have to prioritize the guidance we have been given so far. And I think that's what we'll see. The further changes when it comes forward is that we will be prioritizing staff at schools who serve marginalized and underserved students first. Also prioritizing anybody who is doing, working on our limited in person, which I will get to in a moment, limited in person instruction and any of those services. So folks who are in direct contact would be, of course, those we would prioritize first and then move on down the line. Couple of other updates that we've gotten. There may be some changes to some of the requirements about operating onsite or hybrid. If we would be doing that, but located in a county that does not meet the general metrics, as we do not currently meet the general metrics for opening, we would be, it's possible that we're going to be required to offer onsite access to testing for symptomatic students and or staff identified on campus, as well as anybody who had a known exposure to individuals with COVID nineteen. It also could be further required that we do it for any and all schools who are operating in person. So we're doing very little of that. So it wouldn't just be schools who are starting that, but also schools who are doing it. I've been told those tests would be provided by the federal government. There may be additional changes with the new administration. We have heard that it's possible that we could be testing either all students or some range of students, teachers and staff once a week with some of these that are the rapid result, the fifteen minute thing. Of course, parents can refuse to have their students tested and parents also must give permission to have students tested. So we would probably do a preemptive request to allow us to test. And then we would know which students we could test and which ones we could not. The liability issue has come up. There are many things revolving around that. So you're not covered by the limitation of that liability if you are going against the metrics that went from mandatory to advisory. So if you're in a county operating where those numbers are far higher than before, that also still continues to put you at that liability risk. Some of the ways they could have fixed it or might have thought about it, they've talked about returning to required metrics. We don't see that happening. They talked about eliminating the metrics. I also do not believe that will happen. There may be additional, somebody did mention additional executive orders. I don't think that that's likely now with the shifts that have been happening at the governor level here. It is probably most likely that the guidance was going to be that has it'll have kind of guidance that has both mandatory updates and things that we have to actually do mandatory elements for public health and safety. And then some recommended ones based on best practices that vary site to site. So lots happening in that whole thing. Let's see. We are also, of course, watching the new state and county rates and news on the more transmissible COVID nineteen variants that may shift the metrics and what's happening. We're not exactly sure how that'll go for us, but we're watching carefully. I don't think Oregon has seen a case of that yet, and I could be mistaken. I am an education doctor and not a medical doctor. So other things that are important to remember, that the health and safety protocols are largely unchanged. The evidence shows that if we wear masks and do the things that we're supposed to do, those transmissions can be greatly reduced. So we need to continue to do that. I was disheartened to see Yan Hill County take off and go far beyond our neighboring counties in these last two weeks. And so that presents a bit of a challenge. There are lots of studies and lots of data and all kinds of things on all sides of the argument, and we are reviewing many of those, of course. And while we do that, we are planning for the limited in-person instruction, even during this time when we're seeing a spike. So during the day, during this phase, which was called limited in-person instruction, we are going to start to bring small groups, additional small groups, identified students into the building for optional and supplemental small group support and students who need access to specialized educational resources. So those who need those kinds of supports would include students with low attendance, those who may be failing multiple classes, required social emotional support, barriers to accessing online instruction and limited resources at home to support online instruction. We will, of course, with these groups, continue to follow all the OHA and ODE guidance to support staff and student safety, including masks required for all participants, assigned entry and exit doors, screening protocols upon entry, contact tracing for staff and students, the cohort models that we've discussed before to reduce the contact between participants. For our secondary schools, we have a tentative timeline of continuing to increase students, the groups of students as we work through the prioritization process of which students we'd be able to come in first, what our transportation needs are for for making sure that we're paying attention to our equity needs. Looking at those rampings beginning sometime, probably the week of January nineteen through February eight. And that's our kind of target start dates. We still have some work to do to get through some of those. Continue phase in through the start of quarter three. As they move, as we kind of move forward with this limited in person, I want to be clear that we are only asking, we're asking staff who would like to volunteer to come in. They still have to follow all the protocols. But we are, we'll be asking both our licensed and our classified staff if they'd like to volunteer. They're not required to come in during this time. After we have made the the vaccine available is the the next step in the process. We're working with our associations on that, but it's not a requirement at this time. So we'll have some folks who are able to come in or who are willing to come in to work on our limited in person instruction. At elementary, it's a little more complicated. One of the the issues around staffing limited in person is the number of staff who are available because of the limits we have on the number of staff who are available at elementary school to feel the shift into that who are currently working on those. You know, we have from elementary teachers, they have multiple cohorts and finding a space in there to be able to do that or additional educational assistance support has been a bit of a challenge. As we move into hybrid, which will happen as we move forward through all of this. You know, we've also promised our community that they could stay in CDL, and you can see that there are some folks who decided to move back into COA. So they don't have to go through the CDL and then into the hybrid process. That may require us to shift students into a class setting with a different teacher so that we can cover the needs of the students who are home and cover the needs of the students who are in person. So we have a lot of staffing details to work on that. And I know that that will make some people less than as happy as they are now. So we're still working on the details on those. Lots of staffing questions about how to do this and how to do it safely. Finally, I just want to say we are, as I said before, January nineteenth, we will get new guidance on the Ready Schools Safe Learners with some updated metrics, and there is plenty more to come. So lots happening. LIP is on the way, and then we will work further on getting our hybrid plans up to speed so we can get kids back into school for this springtime as we are creating as much safety as possible for both staff and students. So I'm going to pause there. I apologize. It was so many words. Many things have been happening in just the last few days, in the last few hours, in some cases. So I want to make sure you had the latest update and some of that thinking. And then we'll be getting messaging out to the community and to our staff in the next just couple of days about what's happening next. So I'm going to pause there, see if there are any questions.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
Always a sports question, but as we move forward through, you know, this process, I know it's it's it's, I appreciate your hard work on it. You know, the 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 kids coming back, I mean, if we're not in school and some schools are coming back in our conference, some aren't, how how's that going to play out?
Yeah, great question. Is the sports are still following the county by county metrics, right? So they're they're still following those rules and going through OSAA. So it could be that some schools are in in in-person session and some are not. But either way, they would go through what OSAA is developing. So it wouldn't matter if we were not in yet, but other schools were in. We could still participate in contests if they were to get those launched and going. And so they still follow the county metrics and OSAA is still developing what that next level would be, when the start of the season will be, things like that. So they're readjusting again, but but those, whether we're in person or not, we'd still be able to to participate in those by following all the protocols that we've done. And our coaches were doing that in the fall when we were outside. And we're able to, that was some pretty good success. So but yeah, that that will all continue to be developed by OSAA, and we'll be able to follow their guidelines, whether we're in the building or not.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. Good question.
Do you have a quick question? So the the metrics became went from mandatory to advisory. My understanding is that the safety protocols from both the Oregon Department of Education and the Oregon Health Authority are still mandatory. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's where the liability question also comes in. So that's some of the misunderstanding behind what they actually mean. They may shift them as well. There is and I don't want to go into too many details because it hasn't been done yet, but they have been talking about the Harvard Global Institute metrics for Oregon, which is the same that both Washington and Colorado have been using. So it's similar, but it does change the numbers a little bit. They have not made that determination yet. So I'll wait to see on the nineteenth that that's the change. And that will just change the number, the numbers that we that that we're able to go back. It will loosen them a little bit. But there are, you know, again, some some decisions still to be made at the ODE and OHA's level, but those metrics may change.
Can I follow up on that a little bit? Is that okay? Okay. My understanding of it, and I think you might be able to correct it. I think there may be errors, but I want you, I want to put it out the way I understood it. The legislature in the special session passed a legislation to protect school boards, school districts from liability for COVID-related issues. But the legislation refers to the mandatory, the rules, the standards that were mandatory relating to the rate of infections and so forth. And then when Governor Brown made those not mandatory, technically, it wouldn't be a violation of the statute to open. But a lawyer who wanted to sue would use that the old statutory now advisory guidelines as a marker for what was negligent or whatnot, or less than due care. And so OSBA, the Oregon School Board Association, had a memo out a few days after all this happened, after the legislature and the governor's actions and warned us that we could still be liable because it would be under tort law, not under criminal law. And somebody suing us could get damages and all that stuff. Is that correct so far in what I've said?
Yes, that is correct.
So when you refer to these other standards, the Harvard standards or whatnot, what I'm understanding that to mean is defending us, a lawyer could argue, no, we didn't meet the Oregon standards, but we met these other standards. And they should be treated just as, as, as a good, as a good sort of indicator of negligence. Or violating a standard of care as the Oregon standards. But that would all depend on whether a jury decided, yeah, the Harvard ones are just as good as the Oregon ones or not. And that's why we can't say for sure whether they'd be useful. Is that also correct?
That is, but they allow a bit more flexibility in as far as the number of cases go. So it would not become more restrictive. It would be slightly less restrictive.
The Harvard standard to our advantage if the jury thinks they're just as good because it gave us more flexibility. But that all depends on our, our, a, a, a school district's lawyers being more persuasive than plaintiff's lawyers as to what is the best standard of care. That doesn't make me very eager to try that because it would be litigation and you'd have a pretty good chance of losing. Would seem like. So that's an issue that's out there. And, and the fact that the worry, that the governor made them non-mandatory does not relieve us of issues because we still have the negligent standard of care we have to meet and that would be measured different ways. And nobody knows exactly where. But the, it would be sort of natural for them to use statute statutes or the Harvard or whatever. I have a different question on a different topic, but if anybody else wants to talk about this liability part, if there's any more questions on that. Okay, let me try my other question. I know we've done a lot of scenarios and it's very complicated to try to bring people back to school, particularly if you have to do hybrids or if you have to continue to teach online people through the COA, COA or ours, who want to stay in distance learning or something, because you have to assign people to those who can't be in the classroom then. And so it's really, it's a real logistical nightmare to try to figure out how you cover all the people in the classes and, and still cover them because essentially you'd be creating more classes with the same number of teachers. It could work out that way. Sometimes it'll work out fine, but other times it would be, you might have to have thirty or forty percent more teachers. Have we, have we done a scenario, sort of gamed it out where, say at the high school, only the seniors came back or only the seniors and juniors came back and whether that helps us get flexibility so we can solve that problem or are we still, does it, or we have, have we not gamed that out to see how it would work?
Well, remember a couple of things about that. Number one, the limited in-person is supposed to focus on students who need the most support or very specific kinds of support. So when we talked last time about some of our students doing tiger manufacturing, very specialized programs, they wouldn't have access to the kinds of equipment at home. Additionally, students who are falling through the cracks, I know that our high schools focus specifically on helping, making sure that kids are graduating from high school, you know, looking at seniors, but they have to look at students who are also historically underserved, who are struggling through. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be that you'd focus on seniors. We did talk a little bit about that, but you also have to remember that not, you're not only taking classes based upon your grade level, right? So at high school, you may be a senior taking, you know, these six classes or eight classes and then, but they're all over the place. And so that would be, that would create a pretty significant staffing challenge. So the limited in-person is meant to use the staffing that we have to be able to provide that support. But then getting, when you leap from that to hybrid, the staffing challenge in that one, of course, is that we may have some students who decide to stay home and we don't know what that percentage is. That's part of our surveying that will go out to all, to all families. But to know how many people would stay home, because now we'll have to adjust the class load to see some teachers teaching CDL, some teachers doing hybrid, because remember hybrid is in-person, but it's also online, but it's with a cohort of folks. And so the other thing we have to keep in mind is that we don't, we don't want to break our staff, right? Because this is already hard enough work. And so, and, and I I'm only saying that slightly funny, but it's really, it's, it's a big deal, right? Because we don't, we want people to be able to do that and also have time to do the CDL stuff correctly. So I think that jump to hybrid in some ways will be a little bit easier because we'll have folks assigned to classes and go do some support. You know, the, when I was talking about elementary and the staffing problems around that is we just don't have a lot of wiggle room in the staffing that you have at elementary. You know, you have fewer assistants, you have fewer folks available. Teachers are teaching a full load of kids. And so trying to, to figure out ways to do LIP in the day where teachers and staff are already working with students, that's been our biggest staffing challenge. So you've seen some districts announce they would like to go, you know, start a kindergarten and go to first, go to second. And that's assuming that you can get folks to volunteer to come in all the, all the folks at that grade level. If you're at a smaller school and you have one kindergarten teacher or two kindergarten teachers and one comes in and one doesn't, you know, where does that leave you on organizing that too? So there are some, we've gotten some feedback from folks that, you know, said, let everybody volunteer who wants to come in, but it's not quite that easy just when it comes to actually staffing the, the numbers to get them in there and have, of course, all the protocols in place and safety and things like that, because we're still have to go through the process, you know, like we developed those blueprints that we did, it seems like a lifetime ago that we brought those forward to you. You know, those are still mostly correct. And so looking at those, we did set them up so you have limited time, you have limited exposure. You know, you still have all the cohort things you have to limit. So there's still, you know, again, staffing complication and some of that.
So I think you've covered, covered most of my concern, but I want to try one specific question because there's a certain thing I'm trying to include out here. And that is, you, you've mentioned that even just LIP, it already gets complicated. And what Dave mentioned earlier, which is what I'm kind of exploring here, is trying to get all the seniors back on campus at some form, just the seniors and you point out that the seniors don't just take senior classes, so that's already a complication. But has anybody actually scenarioed that out if one, just one class came back? Have you actually studied that or, or is this, you know, you're projecting from the other studies you've done?
Yeah, we didn't scenario, yeah, we didn't scenario out just the seniors. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So you, you can, you know better than I do what the likelihood is that if we scenarioed that out, that we might discover it was possible, but you know, if it, if it seems like there's any chance, it might be worth some effort. It's up to you to decide that. I'm not telling you to do that. It would be a board decision anyway. I'm just raising that as an issue.
Yeah. Well, we're doing multiple things in parallel, right? So we're, we're trying to work on doing our LIP as some practice runs as well as prepare for getting vaccines in. And by the time we get that ramped up thing, that timeline is about right. Right? We can actually get in that spot where we can get students coming in in hybrid in the springtime. So that's, they all sort of line up. So by going, trying to add the further complication of just choosing one grade level, but then they're not all taking senior-only classes, then you've got another staffing thing that comes up. So we didn't game that one out specifically, but I'm sure that our high school admin has been kicking around every single possibility as they try to get ready for just getting the limited in-person up running first.
Well, thank you for addressing it and thinking about it. Cammy and her people are thinking about mine too. That would really help us know what we can do. Appreciate it.
Yes, you're welcome.
And Joe, that question of, you know, not breaking our staff kind of leads into my question. Just kind of how you would characterize our two unions' approach to reopening. You know, being mindful of, you know, physical health of folks, but also their just mental health and fatigue. They've been highly stressed dealing with doing the comprehensive distance learning as it is. And I also just wanted to kind of thank you and caution everybody. We're coming to the hard part. We're coming to the part where there's a very limited resource and there's a huge demand. There's a huge demand for being back in school. And there's a very limited resource of being able to be back in school. And those competing demands, it's going to be a challenge not to engage in a free-for-all and folks trying to elbow others out of the way emotionally. So, you know, we're all just going to have to take a deep breath, you know, my, I could tell you, I've got a child who cried at the thought of being able to go back into school. So I can relate to anyone who has an emotional desire to get their kids back into school. I can relate to anybody who has an academic need to get their child back into school, but getting back into school is going to be a lot harder than it was getting out of school. And we're doing it with one health professional who works for the school district. We have one district nurse. We have zero epidemiologists. We have no other health professionals helping us guide us through this. I have to admit, I, I feel a lot of frustration with how the governor has changed course with this. I do feel like she has created a lot of confusion in what is and is not okay, both legally and from a health standard. And we, we, like I said, we don't have any epidemiologists working for us. So I just want to thank you and your folks for keeping up with the current state of where things are at, which is a long-winded way of asking where our unions are at with.
Well, I will tell you that, first of all, we've been meeting regularly with, with both of our associations and I have to thank them for their flexibility and working and working out details and going through process. You know, in our last couple of meetings, we've talked about the, the need to get some things written down so we can really be focused on what the next things are. Our associations, of course, are, they have the interests of all of their members at the center of what they're doing. And they have the interest of all their students. I mean, these people are teachers and school support staff. This is what they do, right? They want to get back and they also want to provide safety. So I really, I think that our, both of our associations have worked very hard to be accommodating and make this work for everyone. Honestly, it has been really very, very great to work with, with both groups to get this kind of going. I, I know they're keeping track of all the same things. We all just got a little whiplash today from my 245 meeting. Brandy, you mentioned earlier, you learned something last week. Well, that's out the door. And then two different updates that, that shifted both things today within a couple of hours of this meeting. So I, I think that that's been super helpful. They have, in fact, during our last meeting with our licensed association, they were just highlighting the need for us to look at the timeline so that we'll, the, the teachers will have enough time to prepare to move into hybrid because they're not going to be making a new shift. And so figuring out what our more or less timeline is, and I think we'll be able to do that the next week or so as we learn the availability of vaccines and what that timeline looks like. Because they're ready to start that next level of planning and they want to give, you know, they've asked us to give the teachers enough time to prepare to come back in. Same thing for our classified staff. As you probably well know, they've been doing all kinds of other jobs. Well, all those things are still happening. At the same time, we're going to shift into something else. So a quick example, all the folks who've been preparing meals, we are, for those who don't know, sometime in the next month, we will come up upon serving, having served a half million meals. That's an amazing number. And the people who've been preparing those meals are not just our kitchen staff. Of course, they have been doing them, but also our educational assistants who've been out there helping and, and have been part of that. So I think that quite honestly, our folks have been great. And I know that there's always frustration about wanting to get back in or not wanting to get back in. We get emails on both sides of these, but I, I just have to thank our licensed classified leadership for the kind of work they've been willing to engage in because this is hard. And they're stuck too, right? They have members who are on both sides of that, chomping at the bit to get back in and please don't make me go back in. And so I think they've done a really good job of navigating that. Because it's not easy on their end either. And they get updates too, right? So Brandy, you got some updates from OSBA. They get some from the governor. I get some. And then something changes in the middle of that. So we have those, those conversations. We're not even having a negotiation yet. So. But back to your question, they have a concern. And we have a concern and we want to make sure that our entire learning community is safe. And I know this is really hard for everybody. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler of my own. It's really hard on them. I totally get it. And this is not unknown to me. And they've got an educator, parents, and you know, we know how to do this and it's still really hard. So I totally understand that. But, but thanks for your question. And yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking of what the public comments from the two students. Will, will Luke be addressing what we're doing for the morale or for the mental health of, of the students? That, that, that they, the, the public comment students spoke about, how to encourage the students, how to motivate them? Will, will Luke be addressing that later on or do you have anything to say about that?
I have Luke on, so I'll have him unmute and answer your question directly.
Hi Rebecca.
Hi.
I do have a bit about that. I will talk about our mental health systems and the work we're doing and what we have in place to support those who are struggling. It sounded like at the end there, your question kind of went more towards like some of the cultural work pieces that I know is being done more at the building level by some of our administrators who are really trying to, you know, post videos and send out messages of hope and trying to keep our kids' morale up. I'm not going to really speak to that as much, but I will, yeah, talk about our mental health support and all the systems we have in place for that.
All right. Thank you.
I think we've got maybe time for maybe one other short question if there's any other questions from the board. No? Okay. Well, this is on the agenda every meeting in case people following haven't caught on yet. So we will continue the conversation next week. We'll continue the conversation every day, but at a board level next week. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay, next we have our ad hoc committees' updates. I would like, if possible, the Equity Committee to go first. We've got a student representative from that committee here, Jaden, to give an update on what's been happening with the Equity Committee. And then I know the Start Time Committee has been active, so I'm excited to hear about that update. Greg's doing his magic work to get Jaden to a panelist. There she is. Perfect. Hi, Jaden, welcome. I will just introduce, Jaden is one of our two student representatives on the Equity Committee and has graciously volunteered to give an update this evening.
Hello, I'm Jaden. We spent the first meeting, our first meeting, getting to know each other. Just getting used to seeing each other's faces. And then, and we, in the second meeting, this last meeting, we decided how leadership was going to be set up. And I believe we decided on a sort of rotation. People who are setting up agenda, someone to lead the meeting and someone to communicate between other, other committees and the board. And we decided on kind of switching off who would be doing those things so that everybody has an opportunity to be in a, in a position of leadership or responsibility. And then we started, after we decided that, we started talking about our starting point, where we're going to start. And everybody, most everybody was emphasizing student voice and how the students are what the students think about equity and all, how they're feeling about like they're, what they want to be represented, how they want to be represented. So Cass, Ms. Thonstad brought up empathy interviews. So this next meeting, I think we're going to be learning more about that and making a plan for what to do with those. So yeah, I think that's where we are.
Good job. Thank you. And Ron and Nina, anything else to add?
The dynamic on the committee when we decided to rotate and how Jaden got, I don't know if the word is stuck, but she ended up with the hand, the job of reporting to us. I really appreciate the way she stepped forward. There are a lot of busy people on that committee, including Jaden, and so it's not easy for anybody to take on the role. So Jenny, I forget her last name. Does anybody remember Jenny's last name? Who's one of our Yeah, she's helping with the setting up the agendas and the logistics of the meetings and so forth for now. And our board members wanted not to be dominating the committee, so we really wanted the leadership to circulate into the whole membership and and I really appreciate those people who've stepped forward already.
Yeah, Ron, you made a really good point that that committee is full of a lot of busy people. So it's, but a lot of people that are very committed to expanding equity at the board level. So it's great and it's exciting that people have volunteered to spend even a little bit more free time. Does the board have any questions for Equity Committee? Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Jaden. Thanks for coming. Have a good rest of your Tuesday night.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me an opportunity. Thank you, thank you for giving me an opportunity to do this.
I'm not, is that a, is that a Washington Huskies sweatshirt I see on you?
Oh no, um. It's my grandparents' old sweatshirt, so.
Oh, that's sweet. All right, well, thank you for coming tonight. And then we've got a school start time committee update. I'll let whoever's going to give that update jump in.
Yeah, we actually should have discussed that ahead of time, who was going to lead it. But I'll just start off by saying, I want to thank, you know, both committees, both the, the equity committee and the, the start time committee.
Uh oh, I think Bob might have froze there for a second.
The engagement is the, the most important part. So we had a wide range of teachers, classified staff, we had administrators as well as parents who served on this committee. We did surveys, we did English language and Spanish language parent meetings. And if it's okay with you, Brian, I'd like to turn it over to you. You were on the subgroup that put together writing the, the recommendation to the board. So if it's okay with you, I'll pass it off to present that recommendation to the board.
Yeah, absolutely. And Bob, I don't know if you know, but you, you froze out on, for most of your comment to us there. But I assume that you were thanking everyone for their hard work and I, I second that sentiment. Particularly, I want to call out the members of the drafting committee. They actually worked the week between Christmas and New Year's to draft the report that you have in front of you today. So many thanks to everyone's heart, for their hard work. So as, as Bob said, we did a survey of parents. We did community listening sessions in English and Spanish. We did, we looked at what neighboring school districts are doing. And we looked at a wide array of medical and scientific position papers from different organizations. Our key findings that we came to was that there was widespread consensus in the medical community that delaying start times is beneficial for adolescent well-being and academic success. A large majority of those who took the committee survey either approved of delaying start times for secondary school instruction or were neutral toward it. They included current elementary school parents whose children would, would most likely have to get up slightly earlier under the recommendations of the committee. Even they approved of the change. So that was pretty remarkable. Based on what the busing service that the districts use told us, we have to have a 45-minute gap between the start times in order to get everyone to school using the busing system that we have. And so the recommendations that the committee ultimately settled on were to start secondary instruction at 9:00 AM, to begin elementary instruction at 8:15 AM, and to allow an exemption for zero periods. I won't go through the rest of the report. You guys have it in front of you. There's a section on the scientific consensus to sort of inform you of what we found in terms of the benefits of delayed start time for secondary instructions. They were, they were many, and I think some of them even go to some of the issues that were called out this evening. Not, not completely applicable since this is only for in-student learning. But it speaks to the importance of planning ahead for when we're, we have students back in school. The second part we looked at was community impact. And then finally, we looked at impact to the district and our facilities and our logistics. So, you know, over, the, the committee passed this report out to you unanimously, which is pretty remarkable, given that we had, I believe, Bob, a 14-person committee. So to get a unanimous vote on something from a body that size is, I think, pretty remarkable and speaks to the consensus that we were able to build on that, that body. So with that, I'm happy to try and answer, along with the other two board members who've served on the committee, any questions? And if not, I will turn it back to the chair.
Hey Brian, how do you, how did you feel like the, going through all this, the, the, the letter we got from one principal from high school about, you know, that kind of a late start time? It seemed like a lot of the data pushes towards the high school being good for them. How was the data numbers for the younger kids? As far as performance and things like that?
So the, the consensus is because when kids enter adolescence, they're going through, you know, pre-traumatic hormonal changes. That interferes with their circadian rhythm. So at that age, when, you know, roughly approximately when they're entering middle school, kids' bodies just need sleep at a, a different time. So it shifts forward so that they, you know, you probably, I'm sure any parents who have kids this age notice it's very hard for them to go to bed, you know, earlier than 10 or 11 o'clock at night. And when you combine that sort of biologic shift with a start time in the district that makes them get up at, you know, 6:00 AM, that's a recipe for kids who are tired and not able to perform at their, you know, peak potential during the day. Kids who aren't in that, the younger kids who aren't in that, that age group, and I can attest to this, just naturally get up a lot earlier than kids in the secondary instruction age group do. And so I think it makes a lot of sense from a biological standpoint to have elementary instruction begin before secondary instruction. If that answers your question, Dave.
Yeah, and the second part of that was like, again, from, from Principal Iron. If, if nine o'clock's too late, what's the farthest you can back up the high school to still get that 45-minute time need for the buses, transportation? I mean, can you go 8:30 to 7:45? Is that too early for the, the younger kids?
The, the overwhelming consensus among the elementary school parents that we found in our surveys was we're willing to shift the start time earlier. But the less we have to shift it early, the happier we will be. And so we tried to find that sweet spot where you're giving the secondary group a start time that allows them to get up in a more natural sleeping rhythm, while not forcing the, the elementary kids to be in the same position that the, the prior group was in before this switch. So I mean, I, I'm not certain which message you're, you're referring to, Dave. Correspondence about this during the committee, but.
Well, with, I think the consensus for the elementary was the, the parents were willing to go back to eight o'clock. But they worried about the, the students, if it was any earlier, students walking in the dark to class, to school if it's any earlier than eight o'clock.
How did the nine o'clock, I know that part of the committee's work was looking at other districts and their start times. How did the nine o'clock secondary start time line up with what other districts are doing?
Yeah, so we had not great responses, trying to find out what the other districts were doing. The one that we did find was Oregon City had a start, a start time for secondary education that was actually after the nine o'clock period, I believe. It was like 9:15, if I'm remembering correctly.
That was for the middle school.
Yeah.
The high school was nine o'clock.
Yeah, so comparable, they made that change, I think, around a year ago and they've had good results from it. Yeah.
Yeah, the Oregon City, they start their elementary at 7:55. The middle school starts at 9:15 and the high school starts at 8:40.
So in that case, you know, elementary is getting up later than they are there. So, and they haven't, haven't had any huge issues with that, according to them.
Hey, to the committee, not just Brian, but you know, looking at Principal Iron's comment about that forcing kind of a pushback at the end of the day. We do allow a lot of our kids to have early release and late start and their aids are probably used too much. And a lot of these kids that do play sports, they take advantage of those, you know, late sort of release because they've, they've really got all their kind of their credits lined up, at least by their senior year, a lot by their junior year. So again, I'm just saying they could, by working with these kids, most of them, you know, are under grade checks pretty good. So they're passing. But that is one area where if we started later, it might not impact that much if they don't have, if they're not scheduled into a class that period of time. So I know that that might be difficult in scheduling, but that does happen a lot. A lot of kids take advantage of early release and they are aged and just sitting around, especially the juniors, seniors. So. But Tammy's comment is, is legit if, if, as far as the end of the day, pushing into sports and activities.
So Tammy's letter, which we saw today, because Bob forwarded to us, thanks Bob. By the way, that's, this committee's done a great job as a volunteer committee of making a fantastic report. The analysis of when the sun goes down and how many hours there are cumulative. I didn't know who thought of that, but that's a great analysis and very helpful. And most of this is very helpful too. And I have a lot, I start as a skeptic and I'm still a little skeptical. But your report answered several of my concerns and I appreciate that very much. Tammy's point, Tammy's letter suggested that anything later than 8:30 was going to have negative consequences, partly because athletic practices and, and other things would, had run into the dark in the winter areas. And sometimes they'd have to have practices that would finish at 10:00 or 10:30 if it's, if schools out, if we start at nine. She was trying to push that back closer. She talked to somebody, Tammy, Terry Ellig, Terry, somebody. Terry Mack said that in her experience, when there was a late start in her experience, some of the athletes decided they'd come to class, to school at 6:30 because it worked better for them to do their, in the morning, to do their practices. So I guess what I'm, your, your proposal, the group's proposal is to start at nine. And I'm, I'm just wondering what you think of her suggestion of, of Tammy, her suggestion that it should be more like 8:30, which would put the grade school kids down to 7:45. Did, did you guys consider the 8:30 time or other times besides nine? And what was your reasoning for ending at nine? Ending up at nine?
I think it was, you know, mainly the trying to balance the needs of the two groups to where we weren't dramatically negatively impacting the elementary school families at, you know, the benefit of the secondary school families. So it's just, there will always be drawbacks to any, any time slots that you pick. And this one seems to be the, where we landed in terms of compromise on the two start times.
We also had to consider the busing schedules. The, but the, we needed 45 minutes between bus delivery to the elementary versus to the middle school and high school. And so to figure out that time, that's why they ate 15 to nine o'clock.
Any other thoughts or questions, Ron?
I acknowledge entirely that it's hard to get high schoolers to go to bed at a reasonable hour. And for my, and I'll, maybe my kids are not just typical, but my two boys that just graduated, usually didn't get to bed by 11 either. And in fact, they both exhibit, have patterns that they would stay up. If their school started later, they'd just stay up another hour later. And we wouldn't gain anything in their case. How do we know that's not going to happen?
Well, I, I don't make guarantees in this world, Ron. But you know, this is, we're dealing with biology and when, when all of these organizations say that this is what you need to do, I'm, I'm, I tend to defer to the medical experts. And again, I just want to read you the list of who is saying we should, this is wise. So it's the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, the American Psychological Association, the National Association of School Nurses, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, all agree that delayed start times are beneficial to the health of adolescent children.
Well, I haven't read all those, I know. And it would comfort me if you could tell me that they were, these, these, these studies are in natural situations where students weren't scheduled to go to bed at a particular time for the study or something like that. And maybe I'm making too much of a deal of my own kids and their stubbornness and my weak parenting. But if they had an extra hour, they had to stay up an extra hour, I'm quite sure.
Well, you, I don't, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that because, you know, the whole point is that this is the natural circadian rhythm of children this age. And their bodies are going to tell them to go to sleep at a certain time and they'll get sleepy and they'll, they'll be able to go to sleep. Some kids will, I'm sure, stay up till two. We aren't there, here to solve that problem, I don't think. You know, at a certain point, we have to remember the importance of personal responsibility and, and the responsibility of good parenting to make sure our kids are getting to bed at a reasonable hour. But this will allow them to not be fighting against their own biological needs.
I think next step, we were looking at February 12th meeting as a time of adoption. Is it the committee's hope to review this for the next couple of weeks or, I'm sorry, the next four weeks? Or would you like, this is an action item on the next agenda? What is the committee's? Where would you like to go, I guess, with it?
Well, the committee approved the report already. So unless you were going to send it back to the committee to look at something, some additional item, I believe this is our adopted report of the committee.
Did the committee have the input from Tammy and, and Terry Mack that we've gotten when they approved this report?
No.
Well, I, I think I'd like to see the committee take, take that into account. I think it's a little difficult for us to cram them down, cram us down the high school principal's throat if her input hasn't been taken. I'm not saying anybody's suggesting that, I just don't want to have it look like that. So I think it'd be good for the committee to, in conversation with those two at least, about their concerns.
And, and we can certainly do that. We can, can pull the committee together another time to, to talk about this. You know, I'll say two things. One is there, there was some discussion about, you know, giving, if, if the board were to take this recommendation and, and approve it, give whether, you know, we were going to say it has to be nine o'clock or giving Joe leeway, you know, 10 minutes. And we discussed that at the committee level that we would give leeway. You know, it would be a very different relationship with our superintendent if we were going to say, start it at nine o'clock and make it work and not give any leeway. Unfortunately, we don't have that relationship. So if we want to talk about changing the times, you know, I think that would be more, you know, on the board to, to talk about what we want times to be. And having the discussion with Joe about, you know, some of the logistics of, some of the implications of the logistics and how that would work. But we could, if you want us to, we could pull the, the committee together and, and get their pulse on adding in that, that feedback that we've gotten from Terry and Tammy.
Can I suggest that maybe I do some work here with some of our folks, you know, we've spoken about our, our principals as well, to go through some of that process and then maybe join your committee meeting to kind of give you an update because there probably are some little adjustments in there that would be important. I think reading through that, we've got the general gist of where they would want to be, but I think just some additional update besides just taking the singular email we've gotten. But I could do some, some work on that, then we could get your committee back together to talk about it and you'd be able to present again, kind of what that shift would look like for the following year. But I think it would be important to just follow up, make sure that all the bus things are correct, that our bus company has, you know, that totally understands because we don't want to publish something and oh, by the way, we can't do this because of X, Y, or Z. So making sure that our routes work, making sure that we've processed through with our administrative team. We also have to talk with our associations to make sure that they understand those. I know that in the report you did talk about some of those pieces as far as the contract goes, but I want to make sure that, that everybody kind of has that. So we're ready to go for that next step so we don't run into something later on. But then I can do some of that process work using your report and then go from there if that would be amenable to the, the committee as well as the board.
Is everyone comfortable with that or have thoughts on that?
I think that would be a very good idea. Appreciate that.
What's your thought on that, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. I also would be okay with you collecting that and just bringing it back to us, Joe. Make a decision.
Sure. So are you suggesting I bring it back to the, because the committee has approved the report as presented. So I could bring it back to the board. What was the timeline? We had said before, was that the February?
I think February twelfth, right, Bob?
February twelfth.
That sounds right.
Okay. That would be enough time for us to collect that information, then bring it back and then we can discuss it at the, and you could discuss it to the board level when I get that feedback. Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
I think we'd actually originally said the January twenty-third, but to give you time.
We lost audio again, Bob. Nope. It's, it's still secret.
It came back last time, though.
Am I back?
Yes.
All right. I, I was, I, I was trying to say, I think we originally said this was a first reading with the twenty-third for approval, but to give you time, Joe, to do that work, February twelfth, to me, sounds reasonable if it does to Rebecca and Brian.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Received an email with start times for several other high schools around us, if you would like that information, or I can give that to Joe to include whichever you prefer.
Yeah. I'll bring that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you and thank you for the, to everyone on the committee, too. This has been, you know, your committee was put under a little bit of a time crunch and you all rose and exceeded expectations. The report was great and I know, I think I speak for the board when I say we really appreciate it, the thoughtfulness that went into all of this. All right, well, we're a little behind schedule. I don't know how the board's feeling if everybody wants to take a five-minute break and then have Dr. Neff's presentation, or if we want to keep going. I'm seeing head shakes for break. Okay, then let's take a break. We'll do a seven-minute break till eight forty and meet back here.
Check, check. Hi Rebecca, this is Luke. I can see you're back. I was just checking to see if I had my headphones working. So it looks like they're working. If you can hear me, that's great.
Yes, I can hear you.
Good deal. I tried to put a whole lot of descriptive text onto the slideshow in the hopes that some of my complicated charts were at least explained a little bit for you.
A little bit. I, I was, I appreciated it.
Good. Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions, too, if you have follow-ups for some of the things, because I'll be moving pretty fast here, probably.
Yeah. It's up now, right? You're sharing, the screen sharing?
Yes, I am at this point. Just making sure it all works.
All right, it looks like we're eight forty. Who are we missing? Bob and Ron, is Ron here?
I'm here.
You're here, okay.
I should be here.
You're here.
I, I, I'm here.
Okay, Ron, you muted yourself, but partway through, but you're here.
I'm chewing, that's why.
Ah, okay. I'm glad you're here. All right. All right. Well, with that, let's go into our mental health and school health services report with Dr. Neff.
Thanks, Brandy. And thank you all for letting me be here tonight. And Brandy, I just want to say thanks for saying something about Ms. Shine. I started my Newburgh Public Schools career at Shalen Valley Middle School and I just have this memory of geeking out with my seventh graders, teaching them about nominative determinism, this idea that sometimes people's names kind of lead to who they are or like affect them and who they've become. And I just remember this one seventh grade girl just shouting out, you mean like Ms. Shine? And it was just such a like true authentic moment that, yeah, her name and who she, she was was just so connected. So I, yeah, just appreciate that. We miss her a lot. Um, all right, launching in to the health report and I think in your packet, I might have messed up the year on that, but we are in 2021, so I've changed that. And in the past, I've reported on the behavioral health specifically. And at this point, we're wrapping in physical health as well. So I'll be touching on both of these things. I want to start with a why, just the, the reason behind this. No educational tool is more essential than good health. I really believe that. We want all of our kids to be healthy and ready to learn. And, you know, for me, this really is an equity issue. It's hard to learn like your peers if you're unwell. And due to circumstances outside your control, you can't see a healthcare professional about it. And, you know, thinking back on my times in the classroom, there are quite a few students who fall into this category. You, you know, I, I know the plural of anecdote is not fact. So but still I can see so clearly some of these students who are just kind of gutting it out through some physical pain. And, you know, you talk to them about why and it might be because mom or dad's only went home and they can't miss work. And so the kid doesn't want to have to, you know, skip school or have them miss work to be able to go to a, a medical appointment. So you know, that's something that we're kind of going to be talking about tonight and just why we're trying to add in some health services as well as these behavioral health services that we already have. So for both of these reports, I will, I'll talk mental health or behavioral health first and then move on to physical health. And for both, I've got these kind of four questions I'll work my way through. How are our students doing? What services and care are available for our students? And how much are they using those services and care? And then what are we planning for the future to make things better? For all of these questions, especially the first one, I do have a caveat and that is that at this point, we do lack a robust longitudinal data set about the health of our students, both mental and physical. At this point, we are relying on some combination of state and county data. And then we're supplementing that with some ad hoc surveys that were primarily delivering through our health classes. And that's something that I would like to see changed. I know quite a few of us want to see it changed. We're actually in the process of, we've got a position posted and we're hoping to hire someone who can help to oversee some of our behavioral health supports and hopefully bringing that person in might lead to us being able to collect some better data. And to kind of run that longitudinal survey where we get data back over time to see how our students are. And then if these things that we're trying, if they're making the impact that we hope they're making. How are our students doing? This one's just looking at some of the data from students in the US and in the whole world. And I shared a bunch of these data points about a year ago, I think with most of you. And so I'm not going to dig into all of these data points, but some, the quick, some of the quick, I almost said highlights, they're not highlights, these are probably lowlights. Second, suicide is the second leading cause of death among teens, twenty percent. Adolescents are significantly less likely to engage in mental health treatment than adults. Only twenty percent are engaged in appropriate mental health treatment. Half of all lifetime cases of mental illness began by age fourteen, three fourths by age twenty-four. So, you know, we're really seeing these things starting to present themselves in our classrooms. About sixty percent of those with suicidal thoughts never seek help. The average number of years delay between onset of symptoms and mental health treatment is eleven years. And so just thinking about some of these, you know, kids who are starting to have these kind of mental health things popping up. And if it's an eleven-year lag until they can get treatment for it, you know, we, we just want to tighten that gap. We want to make, make it so they can get access to that treatment more quickly. So that's the US and the world, that's kind of the baseline. And then looking at what we know about our students here in Newburgh Public Schools, we know just some tough numbers. And I shared these last year, seven point two percent attempted suicide, forty point seven percent experienced depression, seventeen point eight percent have considered suicide. And then when we think about behavioral health, it's not just mental health, it's also kind of the choices they're making around substances. So for that, we know that forty-six percent, this is of our eleventh graders specifically for this one, use alcohol or drugs and then twenty-eight percent self-report as smoking or vaping. So those are all numbers that are high and higher than we'd like them to be. And, you know, we are working on some different solutions. And we'd like to see those numbers coming down. When we think about the work and how we can make an impact, one of our guiding documents is from ODE. It was released a year ago and they named these seven different best practices for supporting the behavioral health and mental health of our students. So you know, looking at these seven, I was actually thinking about, you know, should I have you all like give us a grade on each of those where you think we're at? We don't have time for that. I've kind of got to keep cranking through all this, but we will look at each of these and think through and talk through how we're doing and then where we have some areas for growth. The first one to talk about, probably the one I have the most bias towards, but I think we're doing pretty well on this one. Effective partnerships. We have a great community. I spent most of my time last year talking about all these partnerships. They really rallied around our students and come together to provide mental health care and to give students access to the services that they need to be successful. So kind of going, maybe starting at like nine PM, I'm working my way around the clock. Community Wellness Collective is really the group that got so much of this going. George Fox University has doctoral level students who are doing therapy with our students. Providence Medical Group oversees those PsyD doctoral level students and provides their training as well as providing some social work or outreach support specialists for us. Lutheran Community Services Northwest does all of our mental health therapy for kindergarten through eighth grade, so elementary and middle school. Yamal County, we have so many different partnerships with them going right now. And I'll actually talk about one we're going to be adding as well. But they provide therapy to help with our wraparound services. If there's a sudden death or loss, they're there to help support us in those things as well. And then another new one this year is YCAP. And I'll talk about how they have really stepped up to help us out with some particularly challenging things with COVID. In the past, I've shared this kind of timeline of how things have unfolded and it kind of tells the story of how we've got to now. I'm not going to go into detail on all of these pieces of it, but you know, four four years ago, we had this spike in completed and attempted suicides and Providence Medical Group really stepped out, stepped up to help us out. They brought in George Fox, the Community Wellness Collective was formed. It, it kind of, kind of as I'm moving from left to right across this timeline, moving from two thousand sixteen till now, you'll see this really steady progression of how we've added a pretty significant partnership almost every year, I think every year actually. And that's a trend that is hopefully going to continue. We have another partnership or two lined up for next year as well to add. So the, the most recent updates include Lutheran Community Services, adding in therapist positions. And we're looking to keep expanding there as well. They've actually done some promotion in the last couple of weeks to try to spread the word about how they have these therapists available for free to all of our students K eight and they'll be therapists available for free to all of our students K eight, and there'll be some mailers going out and some, uh, digital material as well. Um, and to skip all the way to the end, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And this year has been unique. We hope it's unique. We hope it does not continue. We have, um, really scrambled to try to do a, uh, adequate COVID response. It's been tricky. We've switched to virtual therapy for many of our appointments. It's been hit or miss though. Um, you know, what we're hearing somewhat anecdotally is that for many of our students, if they're trying to do therapy over Zoom, um, if they're in the same house as maybe someone who has led to some of what's going on with them, that they would be seeking therapy, that's just a, a situation that, you know, doesn't work. So for them, we've added this new partnership that we're very excited about through, um, Yamhill Community Action Partnership, YCAP, at their youth outreach facility where, um, they have allowed for us to have, um, our George Fox therapists meet with students there. And I actually have a whole slide on that later, just to recognize them and talk about how that works as well. Um, we're also working on drug and alcohol counselor hiring. I have a slide on that to talk to you about a little bit. And then we are, um, going to spend a significant amount of time tonight talking about the school-based health center and how our plans for that are progressing. Um, one of the other things we, um, are recommended to do is have a really good resource map, um, knowing what our needs are, and then where we have services and support. This is our current, um, resource map. And, um, I think last time I did this, I showed what the resource map looked like three, four years ago compared to now. And, um, you know, three or four years ago, it was really, um, there was a counselor in most of our schools, and that was about it. Um, since then, you know, at all elementary schools, we've added therapy support, we've added an outreach specialist, somebody who connects with families and helps them to get the, you know, resources they need. If it's, you know, someone's lost a job or they need a bed, whatever it might be, they're trying to connect them to those resources. And we have a resource rooms, um, a great project that we're just very grateful for, the way that our community has stepped up to provide material resources for our students who need them. Um, I, you know, I don't think I'm going to name much more on this slide at this point. We, we went through most of this last year, but at the end, if there are questions about any of these pieces, I'm super happy to talk through any of them. I did highlight the Substance Use Disorder Counselor at Newburgh High School. Um, that's one we're hoping to add this year, and I will talk about that a bit more in just a few minutes. Actually, I'll talk about it now. It looks like, um, Substance Use Disorder Counselor. So I showed those numbers about how, um, big, uh, there, there is bigger numbers than we want to see. Um, we don't want to see, you know, anything there in terms of alcohol and drug use or smoking or vaping. Um, so one of the things that we've prioritized is, um, using our SIA funding, that's Student Investment Account Funding, to hire a Substance Use Disorder Counselor. So, um, we're working with Yamhill County on this. And what we're going to be, end up doing is that it will be a full-time person contracted through Yamhill County. Bill will offer alcohol and drug prevention and diversion, as well as individual treatment, treatment groups, consultation of teachers, administrators. They can do classroom observations, they can offer in-home services even out right now, but once COVID calms down. The really cool thing about this, though, that I want to highlight is the funding for it. So Yamhill Community Care Organization is the, um, the group that gets the federal Medicaid dollars across the state, and they're giving up to YCCO to distribute. And one of the things that they've really recognized is the need to partner with schools, especially around behavioral health. And so they are doing a cost split with us for this position. So they're going to fund it at fifty percent. And they're also doing that for our therapists as well. So we're really grateful for that. Fifty percent off for a therapist is a great deal, and we are taking them up on that offer and funding it through that SIA, um, money. So we, we did post this one, and we didn't get nearly enough, um, responses to it. So we're going to repost again and try to do some advertising to try to drum up, um, some better, more applicants for this position. And then hopefully, um, we'll have them onboarded and ready to go, um, for the fall. This is our workflow, um, for a student who has a mental health need. I've shared it in the past. I put some X's on it this year because we don't have, um, anyone on site. And so our workflows changed quite a bit. One example of that comes from Malama DSD. They have this kind of updated workflow for how to handle all these different crises when we're in a distance learning model. And throughout, you know, all of our work that we're doing, we've really tried to, um, make the shifts we need to make to get kids the support that they need. And, um, you know, it hasn't been perfect for sure, um, but we are still, you know, in terms of suicide prevention, giving screeners, we're connecting students to therapists, from getting students in crisis to the appropriate level of care. We're also continuing to meet monthly with both Providence and Yamhill County to review our processes and do case consultations for our students. So even though it's been disrupted somewhat, um, there's still a lot of good things happening, and our services are still available to students. For those that virtual therapy is not working well for, we have this, a, and I'm really, this is just such a cool example of how our partnerships and community, uh, have worked out. Um, so we had COVID happen, and people started brainstorming right away. How do we get students, um, support that they need? And so, um, we figured out right away that our wellness center, the physical space would not be able to be used. Um, but, um, Katie Worthington, our Wellness Center Coordinator, continues to arrange therapy appointments for students, and for those students who need to visit a therapist for an in-person session. Grateful to be able to have space available through our partnership with YCAP and Youth Outreach. So YCAP has opened their doors, they've let our therapists, our George Fox therapists, Yamhill County therapists, work out of there. And, um, I have about five acronyms in there to explain what it is, but it's a truly great example of partnership. We have GFU therapists trained and supervised by PMG operating out of YCAP's Y O space facilitated by C W C to support students. So that's a mouthful, but it's, it's just a great example of how the community stepped up to try to get kids, um, to the services that they need. Um, so I put this slide in just as a a, an example of kind of where, um, where we think we might be at. So, um, this is from, uh, Sam's side. So, Sam's, 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 substance abuse, mental health, um, Services Administration, I believe. But, um, this kind of, this chart shows, um, kind of the, what happens over time, especially in terms of emotions or, or mental health. When there's something, a significant event, a disaster, or something like COVID happens, there is kind of at the start of that graph, this initial emotional high. People feel heroic, they're bonding together, you know, we're going to stay inside, we're going to beat this thing. But at some point, that kind of honeymoon ends, and there's a steep drop off and this kind of trough of disillusionment kicks in. That's kind of where we're at right now. You know, it's nine months, ten months out, um, kind of all the way up through that one-year anniversary and event. And so, you know, this, again, we don't necessarily have great data to back this up at the moment, but anecdotally, it seems like we do have quite a few kids who are struggling, as, you know, was shared in the, the comments earlier. We are seeing that therapists still have fairly full schedules, some Zoom appointments, some in-person, that Youth Outreach of Providence. We're seeing that our Wellness Center staff is doing a lot more check-in with students to see how they're doing, and students are struggling. Um, we are seeing, um, fewer referrals to our outreach workers, and we think that's because, excuse me, with fewer students in class, and those, you know, side conversations happening less and less. We're just not aware of what our kids need nearly as much as we have been in the past. Again, yeah, anecdotally, there's many barriers to accessing mental health care this year. And it, it does make sense that, um, we would be having more instances of increased, you know, mental health concerns. This chart comes from the World Health Organization, and the left side of it shows, um, all these different factors that are aligned, um, with, uh, increased suicidality. And as you look over that list, you probably will notice that some of the things on there are, um, you know, exactly what our kids are experiencing and their families are experiencing during COVID. Sense of isolation, lack of social support, job or financial loss. And so, you know, as we go down that list, it's also paired with, um, these different empirically supported treatments and interventions. And almost all of these are things that we are trying to do. Um, as you look through that list, um, you know, follow-up and community support, assessment and management of suicidal behaviors. Uh, a, all, all the way down the list. The one I did want to highlight, though, is access to healthcare. Um, one of the key interventions the chart shares is access to healthcare, which is something that many of our students lack adequate access to, which is kind of teeing up what I'll talk about later, just that, um, School Health Services Planning Grant and the School-Based Health Center. Apologies, I am moving along at a pretty steady clip, but there is a lot, and, um, I know that we're, we're getting late already. Um, just a month ago, Oregon Department of Education, um, released their Mental Health Toolkit, which gives us some more ideas for how to be effective and how to meet students needs and, and to get them what they need. It's recommended reading for all of our school-based mental health professionals, counselors, staff, administrators. And it is available publicly if any of you all want to check it out. Um, I did pull off this one slide just to show kind of what it focuses on. Um, trauma-informed practices are very important, strengths-based, S E L-driven, social-emotional learning-driven, and then equity-centered. They really, um, take the time to call out the importance of um, having our mental health and wellbeing services be equity-centered. We need to remove structural barriers and oppression. We need to acknowledge our bias and the impact that that has. They also had these six things on there that they named that are kind of some best practices, and those actually do match up pretty well with the seven best, seven best practices that I showed earlier and that we've, um, been focusing on as a district. One of them is training. We need to train our staff, and this has been a tough year for that. We have all these trainings that we've typically done in the past. Most, all of them are postponed at this point. We have just started back with a couple of them. I know MANT training is starting back as we're looking at having students back in the classroom. We need to get some teachers and staff, um, MANT training and certified. So, so we're doing that. And then as we are more and more able to have staff in for trainings, we will start to do these things. And we did pass the SB fifty-two, um, yeah, policy, which does require us to do, um, some trainings as well and to have a plan for that. We're working on that plan. And we'll try to get, um, you know, each of these into a schedule and get a budget for it so that we can ensure that the right staff have the, the right training. This year's been tough for that, though. Um, funding stream diversity. So I think this is the last one of those seven things I want to highlight. We know that we need to pay for these services. They're things that our kids or families have come to rely on. They're vital for education. And right now, um, the way that funding looks, um, we're super grateful to the Austin Family Foundation. The Austin Family has funded, um, almost all of our therapists at this point. And that's amazing. I, I think the thing that we're just trying to stay conscious of and, um, keep thinking through is that this is a year-by-year grant. So every year we apply for it, and, um, every year we find out if we get it. So there's no guarantee that that will continue into the future. You know, we know that they care so much about mental health in our community. And so we would, um, you know, hope that that continues. And we also need to make sure that we're planning, um, to be able to sustain this, uh, work if things were ever to change. We know that Providence Medical Group has really stepped up, and they're funding, um, some outreach specialists for us. They don't necessarily have funding for that beyond a couple of years out into the future. And so if that's something we want to continue, we might need to work out, you know, if that's something we can help chip in with. Yamhill County has been great, especially through YCCO, how we're doing this fifty-fifty cost split. That's been a super effective, um, way of increasing our funding stream diversity. And then the last one to highlight is just ODE, Oregon Department of Education, through the Student Investment Account. Um, you know, we're seeing signals, we've heard from the governor and the budget that she's presented that, um, we should get closer to full funding for that, um, going into the future. And as we talk through all that, one of the pieces that, you know, I'm hopeful will continue to prioritize is, um, our students' mental health care. And I would also say, we should start looking at funding our students' physical health. So on that note, one of the things that I've been working on is trying to add physical health services alongside our mental health services. So it's December two thousand nineteen, we started, it feels like a while ago now. Um, we were awarded thirty-five thousand dollars for Phase One of the School Health Services Planning Grant to conduct this in-depth needs assessment. We did all of that January to April of last year. We identified a host site in Newburgh High School. We did data collection and evaluation. Some really in-depth interviews of a few folks who are kind of the key players in, um, our students' health, you know, like a school nurse or people who work for the Wellness Center. Um, we also brought in some focus groups and did some discussions there. All of that data and assessment, um, led to a big report. So in May, I wrote this report. I submitted it to Oregon Health Authority. And, um, if you did all that work, and it seemed to be indicating that your students could need school health services, a school-based health center, they asked that you would put in a proposal for Phase Two. And so I went ahead and did that, and in June twenty twenty, we found out that we were granted that. We were awarded an additional sixty thousand dollars, um, for this year to enter Phase Two of that planning grant. That planning grant has a lot of process to it. There's a whole bunch of boxes to check and work to do. And, um, we were really grateful to receive the money to do it. That helped us to hire, um, some consultants. Um, that's one of the requirements, you have consultants, so we can hired on, um, OSBHA, Oregon School-based Health Associates. They have been great partners in helping us to move forward with that work. And I, I should note, note also that only six, um, school-based health centers were chosen statewide, um, to be able to move forward, and we were one of those, which is cool. So here we are, fall/winter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, we have been working really hard with a core planning team. We have all kinds of folks on that. We have community partners, we have administrators, um, we're bringing in students as well. And then, um, we're doing a lot of planning to try to keep these pieces all moving forward that are part of this grant. Kind of our next step is to pull together, um, what we're calling an advisory team. It's a much larger group of folks who we then can show our data to, show our plans or our thoughts to, and say, you know, here's what we're thinking, here's what we're moving towards, what feedbacks you have for us on this. So they'll be doing some data analysis with us and planning to be, and give us some planned feedback. And I think a few of you, um, have been invited to be on that because you've expressed interest in the past. And I think we have, I think, the right number where we're not going to create a quorum, and, um, I'm really grateful that a couple of you are stepping up to be on that. That's really fantastic. Um, we still have quite a bit of community and youth engagement to do, although, um, I was, I wasn't chastised. I was maybe corrected slightly by our consultants. They don't want to say youth engagement anymore. They want to say youth partnership. We really do want our students to be our partners in this work and not just someone who we go to, um, and engage once or twice, but, um, that they're through and through part of the process, and, and we're trying to make that happen. Um, this one, this last note on, uh, where we're at right now, I forgot to include in, uh, the draft that went out to you all in the packet. Huge oversight on my part, but we passed a bond, and, um, that is amazing because the bond included funding for a school-based health center. And, um, as I've talked to many other districts who are trying to build school-based health centers, it's hard work, and their work is so much harder than ours because they are trying to go out and fundraise to be able to pay for a school-based health center. And I'm, again and again, just so grateful to our community for, um, passing a bond and a bond that included a school-based health center. So the future on this is that sometime in the spring, we are hoping to pull together, um, a somewhat finalized plan, excuse me, that we can bring to you all and have you look over, discuss, and then, um, either approve, or if there's changes that need to be made, we would make those changes and bring it back to you. Um, excuse me for a second. The, the one other piece, it's going to be some relatively tricky work over the next few months, is we need to identify a medical sponsor. So, um, you know, as Dr. Morlock joked, we may be doctors, but we're not those kinds of doctors. Um, we are not qualified to run, uh, school-based health center. And so, the state law requires that you have a medical sponsor, someone who is a qualified, um, you know, medical provider, who can, um, provide the services, do the staffing, hold the insurance, run all the programming. And as we've talked to other districts that have done this, um, we've heard quite a bit about how that process could be pretty difficult. School-based health centers don't tend to be profitable. They usually lose money. So medical sponsors are rather hesitant to engage, um, and to be part of that process. We really would need to find a medical sponsor who is, um, you know, passionate about youth and serving youth. And we have a few leads, and we'll begin to And we have a few leads and we'll begin to have those conversations over the next few months. At some point, you know, if we get a plan approved, we would start working on getting it set up. It would be a temporary setup. While we wait on a school bond to move forward. And our goal is that by January twenty twenty-two, so about a year from now, we would be able to become certified to get that. To get entered into the funding formula and receive this. Standard amount, sixty thousand dollars per year. You do need to be certified. And there's a bit of work that goes into that. So we'd hope to have. You know, I guess the timeline in my head would be that we need to start doing some work over the summer to get things set up. We'd hope for a fall launch of a temporary school-based health center. And then we'd be able to be able to get certified. January twenty twenty-two. Okay, that's kind of the timeline there. I've not at all talked about what the need is or what a school-based health center could provide. Need-wise, we did some survey and we pulled a bunch of data from some of these sources that are listed out at the bottom there. There's different CHIPS, Community Health Improvement Plans, and CHAWS, Community Health Assessments. We've pulled a lot from there. We've also done some informal survey and we know our kids have a number of needs. I I'm not going to read through all the data on there. You can look at that. I don't think any of it's hugely surprising. You know, one of the things I learned personally that I didn't know before was. How in Yammell County, we have fewer providers per resident than elsewhere in Oregon or than is average in Oregon. Dental visits are especially hard. And then there are no. OHP, Oregon Health Plan, vision providers in Newburgh. So any kid who needs classes, for example, who's on OHP, has to go all the way to McMinnville for that. So, you know, those are just some things in our mind that we're we're hoping to be able to remedy, possibly. So a school-based health center, it is a medical clinic that offers a full range of physical, behavioral, and preventative health services to all students, regardless of their ability to pay. They're usually located at a school. There's great benefit with that. It reduces costs for families, transportation. Not going to read through all of that. I'm kind of just going to get skipping ahead and maybe we can talk through any of these if you have questions about them, just because we do have. Quite a bit here and not a lot of time at this point. Who can go? Any student can go. We're not discriminating. How can a school-based health center help? So one key point I want to highlight on this slide is that. School communities identify and prioritize the school health services that best fit based on needs and available resources. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of different services that could be provided there. There is a minimum level you do have to provide to be certified. But there's also some leeway there. And so this is where we're going to try to listen to our community, look at our data, and build out a plan that really does fit us well. And then ultimately, you all, as the school board, get to say yes or no to that plan. So it's, there's a lot listed out there. We can talk to those if you want to later. The goals are here. We want to improve access to affordable, quality primary care. And mental health services for school-based youth. We're already doing the mental health services part. We just need to be adding in the physical health services part. It does. It helps educational outcomes. There's been a few studies about that. Saves parents' time by reducing missed work hours. It is youth-centered care. Students spend less time away from school. I added this as well, just some good news. With the development of the Wellness Center and our mental health resources. This is how one of our consultants described it. We're already halfway, maybe even over halfway. To having an established school-based health center, which puts us well ahead of many others looking to add an SPHC for their students. Kind of the model we're running with the Wellness Center, having a space, the way that we get students there, some of the memory items of understanding we have set up. That's all just great groundwork for being able to get a school-based health center added into that space. I put this map on here just to show you kind of where they are. There are quite a few of them around Oregon at this point, seventy-nine. I think there might have been an eightieth one that was in the paper last week even that just got added. Just on the road from us, McMinnville has one. Up the road a little bit, Forest Grove has one. Tigard and Twelton High Schools have one. And. Ideally, if we weren't in the middle of COVID, we'd be doing some field trips and checking these out. I have been able to do virtual visits so far with McMinnville. As well as with North Clackamas. And actually, a total side note on this, the person at North Clackamas who is running their school-based health center planning is a guy named Michael Rawls, who apparently used to teach with Joe Morlock. And he told me to say hi to Joe. So hi, Joe, Michael. There's some data on there just about how much school-based health centers in Oregon are helping out and how they're they're making an impact. Again, I'm not going to read that. You can look at that. I did pull some anecdotes, some stories that just kind of give you a sense of what a school-based health center is all about. The one from Park Rose really. Stood out to me. There's a whole bunch of stories. There are fifteen or twenty, and I just pulled a few that I thought. Might help us to kind of see what it's about. But the Park Rose one is about where a kid might come in with a physical health need. And maybe that kid's reluctant, you know, to engage in mental health services, but really, it might be mental health. It's the underlying cause of, you know, a stomach pain or headaches. And it's that, you know, having that physical health care provider there might be a really good entry point for some of our kids who actually are having mental health struggles. And just, you know, weren't aware or weren't eager to access them when it's just thinking about mental health. The David Douglas example, the second one there, is about concussion protocols, how they work with athletes, you know, student athletes can get their sports physicals in a school-based health center. That would be a huge help. I know that's always a roadblock for some of our kids to be able to do sports is it's a struggle for them to get in and do a physical. So. That's something they could do at a school-based health center. I'm not going to read through these last three. You can read through those if you want to, but just a couple more examples of what a school-based health center can do. I have read through a few studies. I wanted to share these just briefly, just some highlights. This one, this study. Talks about how adding the physical health side really can help with some of the the things we're seeing in our kids around their mental health. It helps to reduce depressive episodes and suicide risk. So we believe that. Physical health, just for the sake of physical health, is great. And it's really this. This bonus that's backed by data where we will likely, if our data tracks with their data, we will see this decrease in our students' mental health concerns as well. And then the same thing is true also for substance use. There's a couple of different studies now about the correlations between adding in a school-based health center. And a decrease in students' substance use. So I pulled one of those up to show you that one there. I have a lot more than that, but obviously I could talk and talk and talk about this, but try to keep it to kind of some of the key details. At this point, I've been talking forever. And the way that my slides are set up, I can't see any faces, so I have no idea if people are nodding along or. If I've totally bored you all. So I'll pause at this point and just say thank you and ask if there are questions that I can help answer. While we have a little bit of time. I'm also totally happy to follow up over email or if we need to have another session at some point, I can do that also.
New, or Luke, that forty-six percent number of drug and alcohol use, can you, what does that number mean?
So that number comes from our Oregon Healthy Teen Survey. I could actually pull that up and probably share it with you. We looked through that survey. It's a very extensive survey. I think there's. Twenty or thirty different questions about alcohol and drug use, and it really breaks it down. That one is. And I should probably check to make sure I'm not getting this wrong for you, but I believe that one's any use within the last year. I I could be wrong on that, though. And I'll I'll take a note to follow up on that, make sure I get you that that exact, that number there.
Hey, Luke, question for you?
Yeah, dude.
Hey, how's the, I know this is a loaded one. With COVID, how's that? What you're seeing out there? I mean, obviously, it's a huge impact. Is is there stuff out there on that 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 people are sharing, you know, with with you?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I I kind of, it it trickles up to me. You know, I'm not the person who's, you know, on the front lines, kind of hearing all of it. But, you know, we're hearing lots and lots of feedback, kind of what the students shared today, that, you know, it's hard to find motivation. Students are feeling depressed, you know. I I. I know how well I'm doing and I have everything going for me. And I know lots of our students don't. And so, you know, the anecdotal evidence is tracking that completely. You know, our our therapists are hearing these stories of kids who aren't able to get out of bed and aren't able to engage in learning and. It's manifesting in all kinds of different ways. And we feel pretty stuck in being able to help them at the moment, and that's really tough. We don't have data. You know, one of the things we have not been able to do for this year is get a good survey out that gives us data back. We're actually crafting one right now. Through the high school to send out to all high school kids and get some feedback from them and what their experience has been, how they're doing, what kinds of mental health care. They might need and a few other questions as well. We just haven't been able to get that out to them yet.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Luke, does the, was the healthcare center replace the wellness center or would they both be operating?
That's such a great question. We can talk about it in a couple of different ways. We can talk about it in terms of physical space and we can talk about it in terms of like the legal agreements that we need to have and how they operate. And this can get kind of into the weeds.
My main concern was our 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 resources committed from the school district's point of view.
Oh, in terms of financial resources. So physical space space will be shared, for sure. What's happening on the backend in terms of who the providers are and who's funding them, it'll be an amalgam of things. For the physical health side. How the contract, excuse me, how the contract actually works is that the county has the first right of refusal on the funding. And we've already engaged with them in that conversation. And while they are not interested in being the medical sponsor, they are interested in holding the contract. And so that means that the financial backer of the. School-based health center would be through Yanho County. And then our medical provider, whoever that medical sponsor is. Would need to set up some funding issues as well, which would be Oregon Health Plan, building insurance. We may need to help them with writing some grants as well because. That sixty thousand dollars that comes through the county. Whatever they're able to bill, there's still going to be a big gap between what their operating costs are and then, you know, what we're what we're getting in terms of funding. Was that?
Yeah, but it sounded almost like you were saying that the the school district had very little financial skin in this, the way you're modeling it.
We want it to be successful. We want it to stay. And so I think we will want to consider our financial contribution to it. And that's not really a conversation we've had because we don't have a, you know, clear sense of what it'll cost. You know, we've got to get a medical sponsor figured out first.
Right. You mentioned some of the stuff was being funded by SAA, the Student Success Act or something.
You know, right now, student investment account, yeah, Student Success Act is funding. A couple of different behavioral health positions. We've written into it that that would cover some some therapists at elementary. It's going to fund a, and help me out here, a behavioral health coordinator. Did I get that job title right? It just posted. And that's going to be someone who can help to help to oversee all of this.
Is that short-term funding or is it permanent funding or?
That's funding that's going to stick around is what we're hearing. I I don't know, Joe or anyone else who want to chime in there, but yeah, we're getting every indication that that's not going away, that that's something that the legislature is committed to for the long haul.
So one of the things that most, well, there's several things that impressed me about this. First, it's something that when I was in high school, nobody was doing at all. And so it's interesting to can. The second thing is all the net. The partnerships, it's amazing, of course. And the fact that they're sharing costs is very helpful. So that's all very impressive. And of course, it's easier for us to do it politically and financially. If we can show it's not taking money away from instruction or not taking much. You can always justify some of that because, as you pointed out, students will do better, but that's a. That's a hard thing to count in money. And so, you know, when we get people asking whether we're being good stewards of our resources, which we get every time there's a problem, as we should. It would be nice to say, you know, look, here's how careful we've been with this. We're getting all this for almost for very little. And the bigger the ratio between what we're getting and what we're paying, the better for us. So that's why. And it makes it more sustainable, too.
Yeah. And I have asked North Clackamas and McMinnville to kind of share what their funding models are. And at this point, for both of them, the school district itself is not. And I may need to follow up and make sure this is totally true, but it doesn't seem like the school district itself is actually putting funding lines into the school-based health center. They are doing some work where they're adding. You know, parts of staff positions to help with either grant writing or then running some of the the day-to-day stuff within the the school-based health center. So it's maybe not a direct cost, but just part of a salary possibly.
And as you pointed out, the fact that we put this in the bond means the capital costs, or at least a large part of them, have already. Okay, well, that's my main point. I mean, I love to see this happening, but I want to see it happen in a way that doesn't. Create resentment when there's budget cuts or losing teachers and people saying, why are we expanding our missions so widely? So.
Right. Yeah. And and there, you know, if it does end up getting any funding through the student investment account, you know, that's something we can point to that really clearly states that. That money that has been designated for these kinds of services.
Luke, can you speak to like student transportation issues? Have you guys thought about that at all?
Do you mean in terms of students being able to get to the school-based health center from other schools besides Newburgh High School?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So I don't know if I have it right in front of me, but there is actually funded through the county, a, I think it's called a Well Ride Program. I might be wrong on that. But it's something where if we're having a kid going to a medical appointment, as long as we schedule it ahead of time, they will actually do that for us. So it's something where, you know, we can have a counselor give a phone call over to that program and say, we've got a kid who needs to get rid of the school-based health center. They can do that transportation at no cost to us. I may have the name wrong on that, though. It's buried in one of, you know, an endless number of documents about all this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Luke? I I want to say thank you. It's been really, it's been really good to watch this progress over the last few years. And I still remember when Providence came before the school board. I guess it was probably three years ago to sort of start explaining it. And, you know, because of that and because of your work. And because of the work of, quite honestly, the mental health professionals throughout the district, as the board member, I feel like this is front and center. You know, like I I know what the Wellness Collective is. We know through your reports and through anecdotal things, some of the services our students are getting, and I really appreciate that. And also, too, you know, when it was time to go out for the bond and get community support, it was very easy. Because of the work that has been happening in the last few years to connect the school district with these community partnerships. And I. I mean, I just appreciate that so much. And it's not me that needs to appreciate it. It's all the students. And I I know that having these services available is hugely impactful on their success. So thank you.
Absolutely. You'll be hearing more before too long, I'm sure. And we'll get to probably get in the weeds a little bit on some of the services that are offered and then. Financial aspects of the plan, the medical sponsor pieces. So we'll we'll get to talk again soon, I'm sure.
Great. Well, thank you. Okay, that takes us to our last item on tonight's agenda, which is the National School Board Association Annual Convention. It's going to be virtual this year, April eighth through the tenth. And as a board, we should have a conversation around, are the members interested in going? Are there questions? What are some thoughts about this?
Will you be going because of the state board?
Not that I know of. I I remember when I joined the board, I was supposed to go, and then we had some budget issues, so nobody went. And then last year, I actually had a scholarship to go, but of course it was canceled. So. I will go someday. I don't know when, but I've never actually been. But, you know, it normally is in a different area of the country, which is sort of the appeal. This would clearly be virtual. And, you know. We're asking board members to commit to those days because the registration fee is high. However. You know, there there's also a great amount of value potentially to be gained from it. So. I think it is a worthwhile endeavor if people are feeling called to to attend. I will. I was just going to say really briefly, there are, on the website, the link there that Greg provided in the packet, there's. Nine different tracks that it seems like sessions are going to fall into. So advocacy at the state level, equity and diversity, governance and leadership, innovation and district management, personnel, I'm sorry, personal development, school board superintendent relationship, safe and supportive schools, student achievement assessment and accountability, and technology and digital learning solutions. So it sounds fairly broad.
You don't, there's no way to register for particular single sessions. You have to register for the whole thing or nothing. Is that right?
That's what, that's what it appears like from the website. Yeah.
And we can't sort of tag team? We can't all register as Brian and they'll show up, you know, in rotation?
Ron, I'm not going to sit in a public meeting and talk about how to game this system of registration.
Yeah, I probably didn't say what I just said.
Is anyone interested? Let's just start with that.
It does not appeal to me. And I can't tell what my schedule is going to be like in those days, whether I could commit three days. So I think I'd like to be left out.
Yeah, I think for me, with the uncertainty of things, I just, I can't, I am living day-to-day. I can't think too far in advance.
When, when would we need to register by, Brandy?
Uh, oh, that's a really good question. It's a February. We'd want to register early enough to get the discount. So if we are able to register before February nineteenth, we would save $75 per registration. Oh, yeah, seventy-five. Yeah. So February nineteenth, ideally. This could be something, you know, people think about and email back to me or me and Ron. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of competition at this point. So I think ideally when Ron and I spoke about it, we were thinking maybe two members. So.
Hey Brandy, I think if somebody did want to go, I'm all for that. I think it'd be nice if, if they'd commit to maybe typing up a summary. You know, for us that, that, that can't go. I'm kind of with an S and on Ron on the time thing during those times, but it'd be, it'd be nice to have just kind of a, not a long-winded thing, but maybe a little bit of a summary on, on what they learned. It sounded like some good subjects in there.
That's a great idea.
Despite my harsh words, I think going to one of these is very valuable. I consider it to be at least as valuable as a state conference. And, and the reason I think it might be more is that you're getting broader perspectives and a, a vision of the national scene, which does affect us even here locally. So I do think, that's why I think it'd be good for one or two of us to go, even though right now, at the end of this long meeting, the idea of sitting for three more days and meetings. And I just had a long meeting before this one. So this is my second one in a row. I thought, I'm just, I don't know if I can make it. So, yeah. Somebody in better shape than I am who are sitting around could do it.
Brandy, what are those dates again?
April eighth through the tenth.
I was just double checking. Okay. So you want us to email back if there's a possibility?
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Let's email interest. Okay. Have you ever been to a national convention?
Yes, but not for.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, no. I was asking if Bob has been, because he's been, you've been around to one.
No, I, I've not been to one.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. It is hard to ask at nine-thirty at night if anybody wants to spend three days sitting in a convention. So email interest. And also check out the website. You know, it's got some, some more information on it as well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, let's see, let's go. Next board meeting will be January twenty-sixth. Just a reminder, we're going to have that work session prior. So I think we were talking six o'clock, could be six-thirty, depending on how it gets structured, but of course we'll let you all know. We'll get our monthly financial reports from Nikki, a strategic partnership report from Dr. Neff potentially. Look into the audit and then the first read of the new high school course proposals. And of course, there will be other exciting things on there too, I'm sure, between now and then. All right. I think that's it. I'm going to gavel this out. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.